How on the finance meeting, any order?
First thing we have on the agenda is the sales tax. We received 163, 137, 44 this night. Last year we received 147, 194, 78. We're ahead 63,628, 74 for the year. In county, we received 1711, 56. Last year we received 74, 495, 62. We're ahead 53, 898, 16 for the year. The next thing I have for finance, pay the cost and passed out an email to you from Protective Linings and Coating, and it's about paint wash. And he would like to speak to the agenda for the finance meeting. Go ahead.
I don't know if any of you noticed or not that we had that tank on Front Street washed. It was looking pretty bad when we had it washed. The contractor that did it, while he was there washing that tank, we asked him to go up to the tank at Texas and McHenry and give us an estimate on what he thought it'd take to wash that tank and inspect it. What you have before you is a copy of an email of what he emailed me for, what he recommends. What I'd like to ask the council to do is go to bid on washing that tank so we can get it cleaned up, get an inspection on it, so that we know where we're at on that tank. Those tanks, all the tanks in the city were washed or were painted in 2001. Typically, what you get out of a paint job is 15 to 20 years. We discovered when we walked up on that tank down Front Street that we had some issues we're going to have to address in the next four, five years. We have the money to do this. We may not have the money to do it next year. That's the reason why I'm coming this year to ask you, let me go to bid to see if we can get it cleaned up and get it inspected so we know where we're at.
How old is the tank on Texas and McHenry?
It was built in 2001. We've had that tank washed, just the top part of it, before. They washed the very top and sides, but when you have to go back underneath that bowl, the people that did it the last time couldn't do that. This tank washed that they're bidding is going to be from the top, concrete and off. It's the whole thing. So it'll look like new again. Well, I'm sure there'll be some fading streaks and stuff like that. I don't know if you guys did notice that one down on Front Street after they got done washing underneath there. If you really looked at it, it's got some faded and just color paint under it.
But that's just these pictures of Texas and McHenry.
Yes, that's what that tank did. That tank got hit by lightning in 2012, and we believe that's when that tank came was...
Are there other people out there who do this?
Yes.
I mean, how many bids are you expecting to get?
Probably not over... I'm expecting they're going to be the low, but there's going to be probably two more besides them. But the tank, this is in comparison. The people I had originally gotten the bid for, for that tank down on Front Street was in the $9,000 range, and these people did it for $4,500. And these are the people that went over there and said that they'd do it for $327. So I'm expecting they're going to be the low bid, but we will get some more, I think. Can't guarantee that.
Is paint all you can do to it?
Yes.
Or is there something else like?
There's got structural rusting like what we found down there inside that tank on Front Street that we're going to have to address. When the time comes, if we leave that tank in commission, we'll have to do some structural repair before they can sandblasts the paint.
But is there some kind of a coating or something put on to the last line of the paint?
It's actually a tenebrian paint, epoxy two-part paint. If they mix an epoxy with, is what they did those with. I'm really surprised that the one on Front Street, and it may not be the same thing on this one in Texas and McHenry, and that's one of the reasons why I'm wanting to get it done. I'm disappointed in the way that tank held up the interior. And it can be the contract. You know, it's not always the product you use, it can be the contract.
So this is for $26,000, something, just to wash the exterior?
Repair the spots on the top for the rust. And what I'm wanting to do is we're going to drop the tank level, and I want him to take pictures with the inside without going in it because I don't want it to go through a disinfection process, just to show us what's going on inside it so we'll know in the future what we need to be prepared for.
Is there anything going on on the inside there?
It could be. It could be. Like I say, the one on Front Street has some... We actually had to do some repairs on that one. Vent was rusted severely, and we had to put a new vent in it. And it had some rust inside there on the top of it that is beginning to do some severe rust. And I'm hoping that we're not going to find that in that Texas and McHenry tank.
So if you keep the outside up, does the inside stay better?
No, sir, but it's not very slightly over there right now. I don't know if you've seen it later or not, it's got big black streaks running down the side of it. It is a good way, if you wash it good, you'll know what you have as far as loose spots on the paint. You can do a better job of inspecting the paint and make our city look better, I think. And then we'll know where we're at in the future for, you know, if we're three or four years away from having sandblasts and paint, we can be better prepared for it.
What about on the inside? Do they typically last longer than what?
Most of it will stay underwater, yes. Where you wind up with your problem is in the gap between the majority of the time, is where the air, with that chlorine in the water, that chlorine gas is more corrosive as opposed to the air. So you wind up with a spot, that's the reason why that tank down there on Front Street has issues at the city.
So that's something you just expect, so on?
Like I say, typically, what we'd like to try to plan for is 15 to 18 years, I mean 15 to 20 years. And, you know, if we're 13 years in...
I want to recommend to the council that you go out for bids.
Thank you.
They get a second.
Second. Second. Next to finance, we have here a packet of bid summary. The hardest to pick up in the city of Auburn, we received three bids. Get Rid of It, American Ford, $1191 per household, includes carts and sales tax is included. Waste Management of Arkansas, $1047 per household. Republic Services, VDA, FBI, $1050 per household, that includes carts.
And Mr. Byrd came to see me right before my summon in hospital and brought to my attention that the waste district, Waste Management District, that I guess were a member of Southwest Central Regional Solid Waste Management District, has a contract to use two specific landfills, the Twin Pine landfill or the Jefferson County landfill, which are owned by Waste Management for at least, I think it's another year and a half. They're on the final two-year extension of that contract. Our instruction packet and the contract cover that, and it mentions the district and that anyone who we contract with would have to utilize, be licensed by the district and utilize the landfill that's approved by the Southwest Central Regional Solid Waste Management District. But I don't know if the people submitting bids based their bid upon the rates that were set through the district with those specific landfills.
Would that necessarily be our problem?
I don't think it would be our problem, no. Way I understand it, if they're doing it, if we went with, say, Republic Services, the low bid, they would be required to utilize the either Twin, whatever it is, either Two Pines or Jefferson County until the district's contract was up. And then if the city remained a member of the district or met with the district, then they chose a different landfill, we'd probably have to, you know, switch to that landfill at that time.
The representatives from all three companies are here, if y'all want to...
What are the current bidding... Well, I'd like to hear something about the carts. How big are they? Are they easy to roll? Small, smaller person roll them around?
That's Mr. Byrd from Republic.
I'm Jerry Byrd with Republic Services. I brought my general manager, Blaine Elsie, and we appreciate the opportunity. Be glad to discuss that. I do want to bring up one thing that I just brought up, and I had sent, Phyllis, I sent you that email because I didn't read it that way in the bid. I did ask her about that because we would not be going to Two Pines or Jefferson County. We'd be going to Saline County landfill, which we own and operate. So because in the bid specs, it didn't sound like it was directed. In other words, you had to use it. It did say, "Or an authorized landfill through the state," which we are, and that's why I put our permits and everything in there. I hope that's not an issue because we've got the life to service you all through the terms of this agreement. And that could be a deal breaker right off the bat, which I would hate. So I just wanted to...
That's what I was...
I didn't read it that way in the contract, and that's why I'd asked Phyllis, and, you know, she didn't say no or yes, but I wanted to make sure I brought that before I did.
I'm waiting on my paper right here on this.
Well, you could start a new world on what I don't know about. Why do we care where they go with it after they pick it up off our curb? I don't care where they take it.
I don't necessarily...
As long as...
That's their problem. What I understand is, you know, we're, I guess we're a member of this district, and the district has a contract to use those sides. So I'm... And I haven't read the contract, and that's an issue. I need to put my hand on a copy of the contract that the district has with these two landfills and see exactly how it binds the city.
Or if they start dumping somewhere else, then there isn't that money.
Right, right. You're talking about Waste Management loses the money, correct, yes. Because they own the landfill is in question. Is Mr. Byrd here? I don't know if he is, I guess not. He's the one that came over and brought it all to my attention.
I mean, does it read in the bid specs specific? I didn't read it as it's directed to either Two Pines or Jefferson County. I did read where, I know that y'all have the authority, but also it mentioned, "Or a..." I don't know what exactly.
I think it says shall if available, or if not, then approved. I'd have to find that exact language.
And we made all the requirements through the state of Arkansas, obviously.
I mean, if there's a, like I said, I haven't read that district's contract, but Mr. Smith did bring it to my attention.
Who's Mr. Smith?
Mr. Fred Smith.
He's the chairman of the Hot Springs County Solid Waste Authority.
Right.
Is he not anymore?
No.
The mayor just told me today that we had to, I talked to him about four o'clock this afternoon, and he said that for the next two years, we have to use those landfills.
And that's the way I understand it. Whoever's... The way I understand it is, we can independently contract with whoever we want to pick up the trash, but they have to use those two landfills for the next year and a half.
Now, why is it so? Did we read that, or is there a contract that can be blocked out?
Is it possibly? I mean, we haven't discussed that with them.
When did this happen?
I know.
A long time ago.
I looked, I looked through all my files, and I don't have a copy of a contract with the Hot Springs County Solid Waste Authority anywhere in my files.
And if we don't, if we haven't signed a contract with them, I don't know if that is a problem.
Well, I think the mayor thinks we have.
From the way I understand it, Mr. Smith indicated we have, and it was quite some time ago, and, you know, we've done several extensions or something. And that we are a member of the Southwest Central Regional Solid Waste Management District, and they have a contract that's in its final two-year extension with the two landfills at a rate of $18 and something per ton to use them.
I actually think, just, and this is all recollection from a long, long time ago, I think that may have come through West Central. I think that all of that was done through West Central. Because I, you know, I read the specs, and it says either/or, you know.
I mean, I would dispute the definition of, you know, "All refuse collected for disposal by contract shall be hauled to a disposal site. The charge for disposal shall be included in the rates set forth," which is, you know, our rates included. There is other mention in here that I've got to find, I apologize. Got my pages on this stuff. And if that's something y'all got to do further...
Who put up the bid?
I did.
Who wrote them? Did you use...
I used last year's, or three years ago, or whenever we bid it out before. I went through, did those, send to Luke. Luke looked at them, and we, you know, just used what we had.
Proponent shall utilize, if available, the landfill approved by the Southwest Central Regional Solid Waste Management District created by Act 752 of 1991. Otherwise, the proponent shall utilize the landfill approved by the Arkansas Department of Forestion Control and Emergency Management. Shall use if available. So if available means as long as those two landfills are open and available, they must be used, the way I read it.
We need to finance to have a contract.
That's a deal killer for you.
Well, I mean, my rates based on internalizing the volume to my landfill.
That was why I was...
And that's why I'd sent that email, and I wasn't sure about the clarification, but I'd rather take my chances and bid it anyway. I'm cheaper, I'm lower.
Well, it'll be for the next year and a half.
Mr. Byrd, was it you that I told about, that I thought it was with West Central, and I gave somebody, somebody a name? Tim Digger's kept coming, can I?
I just sent you that email because I noticed that, and I wanted to let you know, we would bid this going to Saline County landfill, just so y'all would know off the bat.
The Solid Waste District never brought it to our attention until after the bids were open.
Yeah, it was...
You know, it was like two days ago.
Two weeks ago, right before, and I've been out for the last week and a half.
So...
Well, my concern, are we...
Well, I've got a little bit on the contract.
Is there a contract?
I don't know. I haven't seen it. Now, like I said, Mr. Smith indicates that there is one.
I read a contract, I don't have it with me, but I read the district.
You mentioned a rate of $18 a ton to use those landfills.
Something of that nature. Mr. Smith didn't know exactly what it was. I think he said $18.60 per ton.
Is that rate tied to the bid and if you services it, or do you have to negotiate with the landfill?
I think that is tied in with the waste district. They have a set price that goes to those landfills, and if, you know, if you bid with the city, the city approves you, you have to be licensed by the district and use those landfills at that rate. I mean, the rate may be, I have no idea if that's a good rate or not.
I just heard $18 on this district.
Right. I mean, I know it's $18 and some...
I mean, I'm not saying it's a deal killer, I just, that was our preference, and that's something if you want to look into...
If I can get my hands on the contracts, I'll see how bound we are to abide by that, you know? I mean, what...
Well, that doesn't seem fair that we could be bound by that, and it'd keep us from getting that cheaper rate here.
Right. Well, I understand, but it means if we sign something with the district saying for the next so many years, we'll use you guys...
I don't believe this council ever voted on it.
Right, and it may not. I mean, it may have been...
I might be talking about it.
And it may be you're all included, whether your contract's obligated, but if you want to look into that, and we'll go into the carts. I'll let Blaine go into the carts and the cart service. I mean, if y'all want to, we'll move on. If that's something you need to look into...
I should be able to find out all that information this week and get it out, the emails to all you guys, and, you know, find out exactly what's...
You want Blaine to go over the cart service and kind of give you an idea of place to...
Hi, this is Blaine Elsie. So, yeah, the cart service, it's, you asked, was it an easy, easy cart to roll? We have, we have 95 gallon carts, it's, it holds 95 gallons of refuge. It's got nice sized wheels on it, they're easily tiltable and rolled, or you can pull them and roll them as well. They typically go at the curb, curb side away from like a mailbox or something that could be obstructed, just like when you, you know, when you, you don't want to block your mailbox because you don't want to block your mail, right? So you want to kind of keep it on the opposite side.
Are these automated picked up?
They'll be picked up by an automated truck. And just so you know, so our company, and a lot of solid waste companies in general across country are going to the automation for many different reasons. It is more productive, but it also, the biggest thing is it reduces the safety risk that our employees have in manually picking up trash. And, you know, every year we have thousands of workman comp related injuries due to needle punctures, you know, scrapes, lacerations from when people pick up garbage by hand, and that just exposes them to a whole lot of minor injuries like that. But also what it does is it reduces the likelihood of our folks getting run over in the street. And unfortunately, that happens more often than not. So for us, it's certainly a mitigation of risk on the safety side for our employees. But, you know, is it easy to roll? It depends on how much you put in there, right? So, you know, but typically, it's very easy to manipulate up and down a driveway or sidewalk or something like that. It's less easy to roll on a gravel driveway or something like that, but...
I probably read something about, I'm going to have to put my weight in it.
There is a weight requirement, but typically, if you're just putting household trash in there, you'll never reach that.
If you fill it with bricks, it's not going to be able to be picked up properly.
Yeah. And it is designed for household trash. It's not designed for you to redo your bathroom and put all the, you know, sheetrock pile in there and every other week, just keep putting it in there until you get rid of it. That's not really what it's designed for, it's designed for municipal solid waste.
But it'll also handle yard waste, which we gave y'all a bid for as well. You can put your trash bags in there, limbs cut up. It'll also, will handle recycling materials as well.
Yes, I think we bid on every alternate option that you asked for, so, yeah, that, we can take all that stuff, it's just being segregated in those different waste streams as far as recycle or yard waste. And so typically for yard waste, you could fill a thing up with wet grass all the way to the top after a nice fresh cut. That's pretty heavy, right? But it can still, you know, it can still sort of sort of issue.
And you can have more than one?
You can. I don't know what the, I don't know the specifics of the bid on that, but generally, most people have one container, and then, you know, some families with larger, larger families or just produce more waste, some folks have multiple carts.
How many employees per truck?
It's one employee per truck, one employee.
You don't have anybody on the back getting off, running across the street? It's a lot safer.
What I understand, other cities, they furnish the first cart, you have to buy the second one, is that the way it works?
We provide the cart at the cost in the bid specs, and we manage and maintain the cart. Now, if you burn the cart up, we would provide, you know, but we're still going to replace it for you. One cart.
But the second cart?
Correct. The second cart, there would be a fee for the service, a minimal fee for the second cart. For $10.15, a second cart would be anywhere from, I don't, I...
There may be a second cart price in there. I'd have to look, but it's not even half.
It'd be less than half for your multiple units for second cars. You could essentially get twice as much service for less than twice the cost.
And just, it's amazing how much neater it is, and what you'll notice, we privatized a city that was doing their own garbage in Lewisburg, Tennessee, and I remember the first board meeting, the mayor said, "Wasn't it nice to get up this morning and drive the street, see all the nice blue cans lined up rather than having bags and different cans, you know, thrown all over?"
With no trash bags, you know?
It's so much neater, you don't have to worry about, you know, infestations and things of that nature. It's all lids. But we are, we're responsible for placing the lids and the wheels. They do get damaged, they get beat up a little bit, but we take care of that. We're responsible.
Yeah, so the price that we, the price that we bid on is all-inclusive of, you know, we purchase the carts, maintain the carts, service the carts, replace them when they're broke. We'll do a mass delivery on the, you know, we've already, you know, contacted our vendors, and we have multiple vendors, so we have backup plans. They can produce, you know, 34, 3500 carts, and they actually have a service that we use for them, where they'll ship all the carts down here and deliver them all based off an address list. And we've talked to both of our main vendors on that, and the November 1st-ish deadline is not an issue. We're a huge nationwide company, obviously, so it's not like they have to manufacture carts for us every time we call. They keep a huge surplus of carts for us and are able to ship those in. You know, they have the teams ready to deliver them if we should get to that, so...
Going back to the second cart, if we opted for this, if your first is one cart, every property owner, that's what we agreed to. One individual property owner decides they want to be two carts, how do they get that second cart?
They just call City Hall. We haven't even gotten to that yet, but the way, most of the ways works, City Hall doesn't want to handle the call. We prefer you handle the call so you know if there's complaints. If not, they can call our office, and we have it scheduled to deliver the cart to you. We would deliver it anyway, but who you call, whether it's the city or us, is something...
Does the city pay for it, or does the homeowner pay?
No, no. No, the homeowner will pay the rate. It'll be billed through the city for that extra $4 or whatever charge on top of the $10.15.
How would you do that? How do you bill it to the city?
So do you guys bill on your water bill maybe?
No.
How do you...
We don't bill at all.
We don't bill at all.
Because you supplement the certain...
Well, then, yeah, then you'd be supplementing that extra. I didn't think about that.
But they can't buy a cart from you.
Well, I mean, we could, we could do it that way.
We could just send public... If they paid more, extra cart, and just let them, let them bill the city.
Some people are going to want more than one cart, probably, but...
Some, yeah.
Maybe you could go...
Some, some.
That's a big cart. I don't generally hear that much. I wouldn't feel a thing half way. You're saying the service would be $5?
Yeah, and I think I've got a rate in the... I mean, we'll work with y'all on how to bill for the second cart. That's not an issue, I can promise you.
Well, I don't think we want to offer two carts for everybody.
No, absolutely not.
One's going to be better. One's going to be better than the other.
And you guys have...
And you haven't asked this question specifically, but it kind of defers to, is it easy to roll the cart? For every, every customer contract we have in municipalities, annual private citizens, we have, always have a handicap list. So if you have residents that aren't capable of bringing that curb to the cart or bringing that cart to the curb, we'll maintain it, like a handicap list is what we call it.
He's a 2% roughly of the...
And so we make concessions for those folks that can't physically get the cart down to the curb.
That's when the driver gets out, and he'll go up and get it.
Okay, so now, right now, when we have complaints, they call the mayor's office. They speak to me, and I contact Waste Management. So is that how you're wanting to handle?
If that's how you want it. If not, we'll give you the main number for customer service, and then call our customer service.
Okay, now, who will they be talking to? Will they be talking to someone in Mexico, or will they be talking to your office?
I'll let you go through the customer service list, but what you will have as a city is Blaine's direct numbers and cell phones, my direct numbers and cell phones.
Well, then, that's all I need.
You'll have a supervisor who will be here on the service day on a regular basis. You'll have his direct cell phone number.
We have, definitely have local contacts.
Yeah, you'll have all local contacts.
Solider makers locally. We certainly have call centers too. They're actually not in Mexico, but we do have call centers.
I don't want to talk to a call center when I call y'all for a complaint.
Most of the time when we have, you know, contracts, they always deal with somebody in the way, just for that reason. So if that's what you like when you start, we'll do it that way.
But you'll have a dedicated supervisor for this...
For your specific contract.
Not to mention me and Blaine.
Okay.
There's my cart of my cell phone, test me.
You will go and get my cell phone.
I have a question. Is the city attorney? I thought that was you.
I'm not going to start complaining or anything, but I would bring up that it noted in the bid specs, base bid and the alternates to go, mandatory alternates. And we're the only ones that even bid that. And we understood that to be mandatory, that you have got to bid on those alternates for y'all to look at, and that's recycling and yard waste, and nobody else bid it. So, that said, I just want to bring that up, that we, our full-service company can offer anything, whether you act on it or not. But I do want to throw that out there, and I'm not going to use that as if, okay, let's trade off, we're the only ones that did that, so let us use our landfill. I mean, if y'all got a contract with the landfill, we'll work with y'all, and, you know, if the rate's acceptable and we have to, I've got to get approval, but that's not a deal breaker. But I really did find it interesting that nobody else bid on anything except the base without, so, anyway.
And within the next couple days, I'll get with you on that, that issue with those landfills.
And, yeah, as, you know, as soon as possible, like Blaine said, we're set up with our cart manufacturers to have delivery the week before the start date, so we can get it done. Time is of the essence, and if the board's going to vote next week and get approval, then that's great, because what we'll need, and I've already talked to Phyllis, I mean, things are, she's holding her. It's, it, look, it's, change isn't easy, but I can assure you, changing from the current service to this type service, i- it's what you'll do from now on, whether it's with us or anybody else. It's just the wave of the future. It's the way everybody's going for all the reasons, safety, it's less expensive, it's neater, it's just more efficient. You're not going to have to worry about the people crossing your streets, no guys riding on the back of trucks, and that makes a big difference. But I really think the neatness to the city is the biggest improvement you're going to see. And I didn't bring that up just to say, I ain't got enough, but that mayor, that's the first thing she said before the meeting was, "How nice," and then everybody's in agreement. And y'all would agree. I know y'all've seen cities with carts and...
We're looking for orange and black though.
That's the issue. That's, no, not a deal, not a deal breaker, it's a delay.
They don't have mass quantities of that color for us.
What we would have is a blue with a blue lid, and if you did recycling, not an hour down the road, it'd be blue with a yellow lid. Green, okay? And then yard waste would be blue with a brown lid. And it's just, you specify.
And their label, trash, recycle.
And I know you're focusing on trash, but just to give you an idea. And like you said, on the handicap and the elderly, that's, that's serious, and that's something y'all need to be aware of, that we will definitely honor that. And most contracts state, like up to two percent, it's usually never more, it's usually not even two percent, but, you know, it can be abused, and you've got to make sure that it's legitimate, and we will gladly take care of those folks. And also, you get three percent basically back, as you know, off that rate, but the taxes are not.
Their taxes were not included, so it would be like we do it with Waste Management, which I'm sure your 1047 did not include the taxes, right?
That's billed per rate, what we bill.
Right, and we do it just like we do it now, so.
We do the same.
The only one that included the sales tax in the bid is Get Rid of It.
Do we have to sell tax on?
Um, well, yes. I mean, we figured it in the bid, what was it, Mr. Burke?
1015 was us.
Ten, yeah, and it was, y'all came out to 1047, y'all would have averaged out to 1047 or 1050 with the sales tax.
Still makes us lower.
I got you.
But that is recorded, that is recorded service on.
I think the representative from Get Rid of It has a question.
Well, we did include, and the spec did say that the sales tax is to be included in whatever number you put down on that sheet of paper. So as I consider it, whatever number you put down, very point-blank in the spec, include sales tax.
And 1191 includes sales.
Yes.
Looks like we've got some homework to do here.
We do. Is there any particular reason why you didn't bid any of the alternatives?
We need a, we need, if that's the case, we need an exact figure for all of this, with all the tax included.
I would rather wait till I have the floor, and I think someone else has the floor before me, I believe Waste Management does.
Waste Management.
Appreciate the opportunity, and I'd like to thank you for the years of service. You allowed us to provide over the last couple of years. We've enjoyed doing business here in the city of Malvern. I think we've kept most of our problems to a minimum and worked very hard to solve whatever problems did crop up real quickly. We feel we've got a very good working relationship with everybody at the city, and the folks, myself and Sheldon Pratt down in Pine Glove work with. Our calls are answered locally by Aaron and Sheldon, myself, I take a few. And we'd like to really continue doing business with y'all. Our price is at 1047, a little bit higher, and with the yard waste and stuff up, we just didn't really, we did no bid on that. We included that, that sheet in on our bid contract. We didn't know what the interest was in the yard waste and the recycling at the time. But our price remains the same at 1047. We're not going to go up, and of course, the disposal right now does go back to a license and approved South Waste Management Districts.
You are using one of the two that we're talking about?
Yes, we use Jefferson County.
You don't offer carts?
Oh, well, we didn't offer it in on the bid.
But you do offer carts.
We do offer carts throughout. We're very familiar, same type of trucks, ninety-five, ninety-six gallon towder carts, just like, just like Allied Services, and same type of trucks, automated side loaders. Right now, we're picking it up with a rear loader and a helper five days a week and one, run one route here in the city.
You do offer that service, kind of effect would that have on your bid?
Well, I kind of have to go back to the drawing.
And I would object to that. I would object to that question, since he didn't bid that often.
Yeah, that's my question. Why, why didn't you bid carts just after you asked?
Well, with our, we want to remain at the price we were at, and, you know, if the opportunity came to, to put together a bid for carts, we didn't know what the interest was for carts, you know, it was price for carts.
So, so the bid spec didn't say anything about carts?
It did.
Oh, it didn't?
It, I believe, um, it was one of the options.
It was an option, yeah.
It was an option to do it?
Well, I think it was two listed, but it was called option. It was supposed to be designated as option one.
You had the option, but you chose not to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sam, do you have to speak? Get Rid of It?
My name's Wes Weave, I'm the owner of Get Rid of It. We're a private waste disposal company. We've been in Arkansas for some twenty-five years. We put in a bid to supply you with a cart and to do with an automated truck. We, like all of the public companies and myself, there's a state-of-the-art automated truck nowadays that we're using, and it's the safest, cleanest way to pick up things, and most dependable. And it's, it's something that we're really looking forward to trying to help the city to clean up the city. When it comes to yard waste on the alternate bid, yard waste is such a, it varies so much. I have ideas of what I feel I could do in as little as six months' time, that I feel, after I loan my expertise to the city, I feel within six months, we should have a burn ban put into city, and there won't be any burning at all, and you'd have to enforce that until everybody gets used to it. My way is that we would take away the yard waste and, and I won't give it away any more than that. But it was a lot more than what I could put in, in a number, when it said yard waste. And I didn't want to loan my competitors my knowledge either, of my thoughts of it there. So it's almost like it needs to be a separate bid. When it comes to the spec, I feel like I'm the only one that met the spec, and for the sales tax in my bid. It says it point-blank in there, all prices must be included. So whether somebody's willing to eat it or not, it's not the question. The question is, did you fill out the bid spec the way it was asked for?
What landfills do you use?
We knew about the landfill situation. We bid on the price predicated at the landfill with the contract with the Southwest District, and, and we hope that they renew it, and it's something that, when the district negotiates a deal with whatever landfill, it's by volume. That's how they get the deal. It's not that, well, this guy wants to pull out of the deal here, he wants to take part of volume away, well, the price just went up for everybody else. And I don't think that, say Hot Springs, which is used them in an example, I don't think that they're going to agree that you can just back out of a contract, next time they renew it, and up their price. So I believe that they are trying to negotiate for the whole district the best price possible, and that's with everybody, not just some of the bodies.
Would you use Jefferson County also?
Yes, we would. And we would keep our trucks here in town, and we've hired local, and listen, it's one guy that's going to drive the truck, but listen, we've got to protect ourselves against that guy, that whether he gets sick or whatever could happen to him. There has to be a second guy that's in backup. If there was a yard waste situation, that's going to involve two or three guys at least. And then there's other stuff that has to be done after that either. A private company hires local. We borrow fuel local. We do as many things local. We'll probably park our truck in the garage here in town. We'll find ourselves a nice garage there, nobody can bother us, nice and clean, nobody actually sees the truck. And then we have a guy that comes in and washes the truck every day. Everything gets used, and we have a guy that comes in at night and washes down the truck. We want to make sure the guy can see out of the windshield, because truck does take the container over the windshield and stuff rocks on it there, and driver's arm is likely to get out and clean it, as a president's specifically head is there at night to wash down the truck. I really didn't get a chance to look at the, even the, the one page that everyone was supposed to fill out. So I'm really only going by the bid summary here, and the bid summary didn't say anything about Republic bidding, anything except what they bid per house. Didn't say includes tax, didn't include tax. Whereas I wrote mine out that, just to make sure, it included tax, like the spec said. But, I mean, I'd certainly like to inspect just to see what they wrote down for other things before I comment too much more. I sure would like to be in touch with the whole sometime this week.
I've got a question on the carts. What happens if a cart's not in the right place? Do you just pass it up?
Now, guys, right, the guy, the driver is driving from the right-hand side of the truck. The mechanism that picks up and reaches out and grabs the cart is only about two feet away from him, sitting in his seat. If someone has a cart out and it's not out in the right direction, he's only a step away from turning the cart, getting out of the truck and turning the cart. He's not jumping out of way up high in the truck. He's down as close to the ground, because this type of truck that we buy, it's called low entry. The kid is in front of the frame, so it could be low to the ground. So it's real easy for him to jump out of the truck. It's right at his fingertips practically. And that's the idea of, if someone has a cart and they have something extra, and they don't want to buy another cart, they could put out a regular garbage can next to their cart. The guy will get out and pick up an extra garbage can, or an extra van that they put next to the veil. That's the idea of him being so close on the right-hand side, at, at, at street level Any other questions, Sam, that I could...
I've got a question for, for all three of you guys. What days of the year do you not pick up garbage?
I'll speak for myself. Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's, that's it.
We've got a list of holidays, however, when you're not picked up that day, just say Thanksgiving's on a Thursday, the people that are picked up on Thursday, we pick them on Friday, people on Friday, we pick them on Saturday. You get a pickup every week, you don't miss any pickups.
You miss zero pickups throughout the year.
And they'll be notified.
We have six paid holidays, six recognized holidays.
I think now we abide by the terms of the current contract. The only holidays I believe we have are Christmas and New Years, I believe with every other holiday, we have the same day.
I think my guys actually have about eight days that they're paid for, but they choose not to work on three of them. The other ones, they would rather work on the holiday rather than work Saturday. So, and they get paid double time and a half, so they're, they're willing to go out there and do it on holiday.
Any other questions?
So the only, the only unresolved issue at this point is the...
Contract.
With the, with the Solid Waste Management District, I believe this gentleman's correct, though, that the district gets together and then negotiates the rates and Hot Springs or whoever else is in the district, because I wouldn't be too keen on us, you know, jumping shit on those two landfills, but...
And if that's the case, I would assume we're all going to get the same rate.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, I think the rates locked in, you know.
Can you just let me know what you find out and what the rate is?
And I, but I don't know how long is left on that. And then it comes to question, you know, I think if Malvern remains a member of that district, you know, we can probably pull out of it if you like and whatever, agree in terms of...
The mayor told me a year and a half to two years, is what he told me today, but I don't know if that's off the top of his head or what.
You bid for one year?
No. It's, I think it's a three-year bid with a three-year option.
I thought you said three with a two or a three.
I think it's a three with a five, one-year option.
Okay, three with five, one-year option, I think that's correct.
And if you ran into buying in a year and a half, you wouldn't have a problem with us, because if we had to start there, we'd be able to just take it over to Selene County immediately after we own and operate it, and it's got life and...
If y'all were still in contract negotiations and extended out, and extended a period of time, we would have a state-certified location to take the waste.
I was curious on your carts too, is it similar to his? What if there's like a, someone doesn't put it in the right spot, do you just pass it up or...
No, he'll get out. What we'll do is, we'll have flyers, when we make deliveries, you'll have the pickup day on a flyer with the pickup day, and it'll tell you how to place the cart. And then that's something we'd want to have on the website, and something we would keep reiterating.
And our drivers are really good with helping educate the customers in situations like that. We just did, we just had a big, big educational push from some work that we picked up in Selene County, and did a lot of, the drivers did a lot of informational stuff for our customers, for his can location and, and stuff like that. So we've had good success with that. We certainly wouldn't, you know, get a contract and drive up, because somebody's got to drive up, if somebody's got their can by, from the wrong place or whatever, but, you know, we would work with those folks with any kind of issues like that, to help get them...
And it can be dumped when the can's turned the wrong way? The problem you get is that the lid will open up and it can cause a mess.
Yeah, I said, it's an educational piece, and people aren't used to eating carts, but it's, it's easily overcome.
We've been going with a black cart with an orange lid on it back.
We got thirty-four hundred stock.
He says we're quite a delivery.
And it's got a leopard on one side.
Of course, me standing in front of you, of course, we're prepared to take over on November first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Max, I have an ordinance... Hey, Max, I have an ordinance letter.
Are we going to go ahead and recommend to the council?
Oh, I don't know. I don't think I can say what Luke says.
No, I think that'll be taken off until we get some clarification.
Well, make sure, make sure I understand what you're...
I'm pretty sure we're going to be bound to do it for, you know. But I want to make, I want to make double sure, um, just because I know some bits are taking over.
Well, I guess what I want to know just to have, we're going to put it on there. If this whole is true, is that...
More than likely, it wouldn't cause an issue. The rate is, of course, the most important issue. I mean, I guess I need to know what is the rate that we would be paying at the landfill? And as soon as you can show me that, I'm going to give you an answer.
The only problem with not doing anything Monday is that the contract...
We come back following Monday. You can't do it Monday if you don't have the information.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying that October 31st, our contract runs out with waste management.
Would there be a reason why we would not have the information by Monday?
I don't see any reason.
He says he's going to get on it tomorrow.
All you got to do is get in trust, get in touch with the waste management district, get the contracts, bring them. That's all you have to do.
Put it on there then and based on how quick we get the information.
Should be able to get you guys emails out.
As soon as he gets the rate, this thing tells me how.
I'll email it to me and we'll get it.
Okay. Should be able to, you know, like to fill us tomorrow or Wednesday for us.
I don't think we came to conclusion how we're going to, you know, someone buying another can trap a can, whatever. How they're going to pay for it, we never did finalize that.
Is that, you said five bucks or whatever?
Less than half or whatever a rate is.
Is that a month?
Yes, per month for the actual payment. So it's just like a run, you know, it's just like the...
The thing that's got to be understood is that he probably don't pay that, not necessarily.
Right, right.
And is there like a set rate you can sell them?
Would the best maybe be them paying in advance before they got their card?
The best one would be for them to buy a second car.
Pay a year or something like that.
Yeah, I'll say this. We have a very good, uh, subscription billing system. I mean, the majority of our customers in this area are subscription. It would be very easy to enter one of your residents into our system as with a second container rate and we could just bill them directly.
The extra four or five obvious miles.
That work for you?
We don't want to get any worse than that.
Anything makes it easier on you.
We may have emails or something.
I just can't believe that many people...
Can you give us an idea of communities you're servicing now? Are they using two carts?
Sure. We have progress subscription services offered in Saline County. And, um, it's not a, it's just varies, you know.
But the local government fills the customer. Most people pay for it. Most households pay for it. About everywhere you go in the state, they pay for it and they just add it to their bill. We don't have the, we don't, we don't do that.
You have a unique situation. Normally it shows up on a utility bill or oil bill or taxes or something.
I was just curious, like the regular family, you know, is that a two-card thing? I mean, is it or not?
Typically, typically, everybody uses one card. I mean, you've got a family of six or eight or, you know, a larger family. Sometimes they'll use multiple cards. But, I mean, and this goes into something else, too. You guys may not want to do this, obviously, but you wanted the information. Recycling, when we have customers that recycle, a lot of times they will go with a recycled cart option instead of a second cart option because it's relatively the same, maybe even a little less to recycle when they have the cart to. And it just reduces their bulky ways so much from cardboard and paper and cereal boxes and all that kind of stuff. So they get to feel good about recycling. They get a second cart and, um, so, but, you know, that's just down the road, I guess, maybe if y'all are interested in that option, but...
And to avoid a second cart, this might help improve the drop-off recycling.
But typically, it's a larger, a really large family that would, you know, utilize a second cart.
And most of them can usually afford it in that case.
The other option the city would have would be start billing those extra charges.
But we'll, we'll, like Blaine said, we, we bill through subscription customers and we can handle the same.
That would not be an issue.
The other option is put out a regular garbage pail, next-to-year pail. Temporarily, you'll have three kids and they're temporarily going to be producing more than the average family. It's not going to keep up forever. If we get you on billing, we're going to keep you on billing. You're going to have a hard time getting off of billing.
Can your truck deal with a regular trash can?
Yes, it's, it's no problem at all.
Can y'all's truck pick up regular trash?
Certainly, we can pick up extra trash, but that kind of defeats the whole purpose of carts. If you want to keep your city clean by putting the trash in the cart, it doesn't do you any good to have three or one or two bags sitting next to your cart every week.
Well, I'm saying initially, you know, people might not know, do I need two carts or not? And they end up having...
And just so you know, I mean, the transition that we took over in Saline County, we are still, still, I mean, we've had, we've been doing it for about a month and a half and we're still working with the customers. We're not just leaving stuff on the ground. Uh, we're picking that stuff up and we're trying, like I said, to educate those folks and talk about a second cart if they could use one. They have recycle options up there. And, uh, and then that's part of the education, right? But we're not going to just leave trash on the ground. But to just say, let's give them just an extra bucket to put out there, I think that really defeats the purpose of having a cart service.
And then again, we think whenever you have that birthday party this weekend and you have this abundant amount of garbage that you really don't want to have a cart year-round, uh, to have a birthday party three times a year.
Where I sleep in this week and forget to take my trash down. Next week, I have twice the amount of trash.
Right, anything could happen there, so, uh...
Okay, Max, I have levied city taxes for the year 2015. It's something that we do every year. No increase? No increase.
We need to have it done by November, so would y'all prefer doing two renewals this month or one renew this month and two renewing next month?
Two renew this month.
Two renew this month?
That's all I have to find out.
Okay. One other issue.
No, no.
Question that's been raised and we're going to have to deal with it sooner or later from budget standpoint regarding the mayor's salary, the upcoming mayor, the mayor's... What's your title?
Admin.
Admin. Question that would have to come from the finance committee to me would be a recommendation to the council, whatever it is you want to do, leave the same.
Leave on the same.
That your feeling? Right now, my numbers are correct. The salary, the base salary for the mayor is seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And the base salary for that position is thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight. I don't think you can get it on DVD or whatever. But that would be the salary that the new employees and the new mayor would be making. If you do not change, you cannot change them after. First, there is some question as to whether it would be appropriate to...
I'm, I'm wondering if it's the table we're going to have.
Well, there is some question. The city attorney might address that since they have already...
Yeah, I think, uh, at the end of last year is when we review all of everyone's pay and all that. So I have to look into that, you know. If there's some, some way we could do it at this point in juncture.
And that's based on the fact that they're running for office, based on the salary that was set.
Now, the administrative assistant is different because, because that's an employee of the state. It will be a new employee. So you will want to start them at a new employee's rate.
But I believe filings are based on the projected salary.
It's a percentage of the salary that you foresee you get the...
We should need to know something when we start doing budget, you know, when we start doing budget.
We need to know what we can do.
Donna's working on green sheets. I think the mayor said he's coming tomorrow to work on budget. So as soon as I get something out, you know, I'll get it to you, but... We just need some...
We need to bid here so we can attach in the numbers for the budget.
Well, we need some info, what we can do. We need to know what we can do for...
So can we change the budget?
I don't know.
Mayor's, I don't know.
That might be a question for the league.
I think that, I think I have to look. Now, the first year after...
And we will in December have to pass the elected official salary, you know, the ordinance setting the elected official salary.
Right.
What does it base on?
Well, we... Seventy-five, seventy-five, one twenty.
Well, that's just the budget. We're talking about the budget.
No, no, we have to pass a special ordinance that sets out elected officials' salaries. It has y'all's. We've always been required by the auditors, which I guess means it's required by the state.
Besides the regular budget.
Yeah, what that does is once that salary is adopted, you can't lower that salary during that term. You can raise it, but you can't lower it. So once you pass that ordinance for, for a four-year term, you can't lower that salary. And it's required by law that we pass it.
That's what creates unusual situations. You know, if you'd done this about earlier in the year, you didn't even know whether the mayor's going to run for reelection.
Right.
So, so what?
How do you ever do it?
That's, that's the question.
I think not now and when is the break for now.
I think you can still do it.
Yeah, I don't know if that percentage would, just because you have to pay a fine fee based on the salary, you know, the expected salary. I don't think that necessarily in itself would prevent that from changing.
Is there no, no question that the job description has changed? Anybody disagree with that?
Which job?
Which job? Would you say that it's different now than it was when you put that salary on?
Yeah.
Can you change?
There is no description.
No description.
That's a vast side law in scripture for...
I know what we'd do, uh, Mr. City Attorney. Let us know as soon as you can. The reason I'm saying put it on the agenda is because I think we've got to make the decision pretty quick.
So you want it on the agenda?
Yes.
If he, yeah, if he gets us the information put down this week, if not, we'll have to table it.
We'll have to table it if we don't have an agenda.
You think it's going to be down by December?
Yeah.
Well, actually, you mean that particular part of it, the salaries have to be done by December? Or is it like the regular budget, which can be done over in January?
I think it's being placed where they take office.
Oh, it has to be in place before they take office, but...
That's what I'm saying. That one has to be done in December, but the regular budget can be voted on in January.
Right.
Yes.
But we can't prepare a budget till we know what people's salary is. So now, I, I'll tell Donna's. And I think she's got projected revenues pretty much in place and hopefully I can have... She might even can have a budget if the mayor, she and the mayor can get together tomorrow, she might even can have a budget that would tell you where we are, you know, with carryover and how far we're coming close to balancing and all that stuff with the current, maybe, maybe.
I can tell finance committee from looking at the numbers, I've seen this is going to be a tougher budget year than past years have been. I don't like any questions about that.
Our lack of carryover last year really hurt us.
Right. And the new mayors need to know that coming in. The new mayor, wherever that happens to be.
They don't have it addressed.
Wayne, did you bounce? My salary on there as well or just the mayor's?
Uh, don't think yours, I mean, yours, I say yours, whoever's in the job, that can be done in January or whatever. I don't think...
No, we have to set the budget. When we do our budget, my salary is already included in there.
But it's not, I mean, it's not required by law.
Right, that's right.
I think that's one, no, I don't know. We put that on the third card.
Well, that's, she's not elected.
I'm not elected.
So she don't have to be in that December.
No, the only reason you can put it in there is just because whoever's...
The budget under the executive department, there's a salary. My salary is already in there. If y'all are going to leave it the same, that makes it easy on us to do the budget. You're going to change it.
Well, any change it would make is not going to, it's not going to be a major deal or blow for the budget either way.
Okay.
Always a thing.
And the same thing with the, the position is because you put it in the budget at that rate, doesn't necessarily mean you have to pay it at that rate.
Okay.
Or at least that's my bid. Well, there's going to be a learning curve there. I mean, we can leave the budget the same, but when we actually, well, when the mayor, it's committed to the mayor.
Of course, you can leave the budget the same. If you want to figure the budget that, you know, and then y'all want to discuss whatever the mayor's salary is going to be in that, I mean, if you want us to prepare the budget using these figures, we can do that. We can do that.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to put it on the agenda that way we can get an answer and you can proceed with the rest of the budget. That one line item probably leave it the same.
That's what I'm saying. That one line item is not going to probably fluctuate enough to throw things off that way.
Anything else for finance?
Are you through?
I can't think of anything else.
You sure? I won't give you just a minute. Okay. If John Wayne Reynolds is through, we're going to proceed with the agenda.
First thing on the agenda is to take Allison's fifteen tax levy. No new sales tax, everything will stay the same. And then accept the garbage, uh, then, providing that Luke does his investigation tomorrow.
I assure you, I will do so. And the...
Mayor's salary?
That one will probably be a little more difficult, probably get done, too.
You'll get it tomorrow?
Probably.
Okay.
Citizens motion to appear.
Citizens, Mr. Parsons, where's Mr. Parsons?
I don't have anything to say. I think it was all negotiated back here.
Citizens, department heads?
I have something.
Come up, Jerry.
Did you get David's stuff on there?
We don't have to, we don't have to put that on there.
We'll vote on it.
All right.
Maybe y'all are all aware of the event we had Thursday night over the storm with the, uh, the tree falling on the House of Moore Street. I'd like to bring forward two members of the fire department for commendation. After a storm that occurred on October, October 2nd, Captain Heath Loy and Lieutenant Johnson Harvard entered a partially collapsed structure to rescue a fifteen-month-old child from under the brick. Their training and relentless efforts led to a positive outcome. The child was rescued without harm. All responders that evening did an exceptional job. These two incidents stood out as they knowingly went into a very dangerous and unstable structure to save a life. I think considerations on this matter, uh, and I don't come a lot of times for commendations for guys doing their stuff, but, uh, they really did. Robin was there. Those guys did an outstanding job. Wish it would have been an even better outcome, but it was still a, uh, I mean, I don't know how to tell you that I've been to a lot of, been to a lot of things and that I really did not expect this outcome on this. And those guys didn't give up. And I, I still don't know how they did it. Honestly, after looking at it the next day and studying for the stuff, I still don't know how they, they got... Honestly, after looking at it the next day and studying for the stuff, I still don't know how they, they got the little grab. But, but they really did take the, the exceptional risk that night. And I'd like to see them get some recognition for it.
What do you think I'll do it?
Monday night to do the commendation?
Yes, sir, I'd be here Monday night. I also talked to the... I also talked to grandmother, she said she would like to be here as well, Ms. Jones, Ms. Luke Jones. But I can have them here Monday night, that's y'all's wishes. Have them here. We'll be here.
Any other department units? Do you have a motion to your side?